All right. We call to order the city council study session Tuesday, August 16th, 2022. It's 5:00 PM. First item of discussion is discussion regarding the development of a downtown business improvement district. Mr. Cameron Brewer.
All right. We'll jump right in. So, thank you all for attending this evening. My name's Cameron Brewer. I've had the opportunity to meet and get to know a few of you. But just a little bit about myself and why I have interest in a business improvement district being proposed for downtown Norman. I'm a property owner on Gray Street, currently doing a redevelopment of old Norman Bodyworks building at 315 East Gray. It's going to be a development called The Standard, kind of big beer garden development. So that's, call it in part, initial interest, but I've been interested in a business improvement district discussion for downtown Norman for several years, in part due to my background as the finance director for the downtown Oklahoma City Business Improvement District, where I was in that position for about four years. As you know, as I'm sure you know, in downtown Oklahoma City, there are a number of different districts. And so, as part of that is managing anywhere from 10 to 12 different district budgets and a very complicated business improvement district that we hope we're proposing a much simpler but still equitable business improvement district for Norman. Learned a lot of things, good and bad, from that. And then, otherwise, the, just personally, I have an educational background in business as well as city management. And so, kind of crossing those two is where we have a bid that crosses over. And I only point this out, we were 100% volunteers as part of this. This is a board, a committee that came out of the Norman Downtowners Board. And I was interested in stepping up as chair of the committee to put together this bid, in part because I had the background and had some contacts to bring best practices to the table. And so, that's what I hope we're presenting tonight to you. So, what is a business improvement district? You all had a study session as council about a month ago, I believe, maybe a little less. But you kind of talked about the specifics, that it's a 10-year legally constituted city district that requires a certain percentage of private, or sorry, all private and public property owners within the district to form the district initially and through assessments on property within the district. So, just starting out, you know, why consider a business improvement district for downtown Norman? Bids are essentially maintenance and marketing districts for a specific geographic area. They work best in urban environments. That's also why downtown Norman having, essentially being the most urban part of all of Norman, makes sense for a geographic area for a bid to be. But the, you can kind of think about a bid as the three Ms. Maintenance, marking, marketing, and management. The fourth component is improvements. Improvements have been interpreted differently across municipalities across the United States. Even in the state, the stat, bid, bid state statute interprets bids slightly differently. In Oklahoma City, improvements basically means very slight, small, you know, call it under $5,000 improvements within the urban area. In Tulsa, they built a ballpark. So, how we're interpreting a bid here in down, in Norman, is much more in Oklahoma City's vein of any sort of improvements or capital improvements is smaller additions like the additional street furniture, the completion of the holiday lights across Main Street, things like that. So, going back to the three Ms. Maintenance, marketing, and management. The first maintenance, this is really maintaining everything in the public realm. It's not maintaining anything in, with private property. So, that's important to consider. It's, you're thinking, you're talking about streets, sidewalks, basically anything where the public can access where technically they're not trespassing on private property. So, that's picking up trash, power washing, maintenance of existing street furniture, and landscaping. And it can also be additional things like seasonal plantings and beds. And as you know, we have landscaping beds up and down Main Street that have essentially remained static as far as what landscaping they have in those beds. And so, there's the option, assuming that's something that bid rate payers are interested in, that you could do seasonal plantings, fall, spring, and summer type plantings to kind of give it a little refresh. Marketing, so that's, that encompasses a number of different things. I'd say marketing also is not just marketing the pure sense of what you think the definition of the word, that's also programming of the downtown environment. So, that could be festival coordination and management. We have a number of festivals in downtown that, that's one of the things we are extremely proud of. However, it's very partial out among several different groups that run these festivals. A bid helps to be a central point of coordination for these festivals. And managing those conversations while having, maintaining the existing relationships with property owners that will streamline, both make it better for the festival itself, but also better for property owners to make sure that their voices are heard in a way that are coordinated and consistent across all festivals that occur. Advocacy for downtown specific issues. This is a really key one. And this, this kind of goes to the management piece of the staff for Business Improvement District. Downtown, just by its nature, being the most urban part of most any city, but especially in Norman, is, has unique issues specific to downtown that are unique to the rest of the city. And when I say issues, that doesn't, that can be positive issues, that can be negative issues. Issues simply that we have lights that are strung over Main Street. Where else do we have that? We don't, as far as I know. The, there, we have, we have buildings that have, have zero setback and a, you know, a number of different festivals that we talked about. We also have issues that, you know, coordination of the unhoused, just issues that, that may affect the downtown area that don't affect the rest of the city quite as much. So, the advocacy side of this, but this is also advocacy from a marketing side that through the formation of a 501(c)(6) nonprofit organization that will be governing this bid, that allows advocacy for, for marketing for specific businesses. The small businesses in the downtown environment could be part of the specific social media marketing efforts of the bid itself, which is a great thing for those businesses to get their name out, especially with new businesses or those that have been long established in the community. And all this is coordinated through management. The management is the executive director. Executive director essentially manages everything that is, is under the bid umbrella. And, and that's, that's something that I can't emphasize enough, because that's, that is something that has been brought up as what I'll call a concern among property owners, is why do you need to hire somebody? Why can't this be a volunteer job? It's a big job. The, the jobs of an executive director, not only do they need to get to know all property owners, but they need to have relationships with city staff. They need to have a pretty good handle on how to, to, to market a downtown environment. They also need to coordinate vendor coordination for street maintenance, trash pickup, power washing. That's kind of a, call it a utility person right there. And, and managing the budget in a, an efficient and effective way, that, that takes manpower and, and that's essentially not a volunteer job. So, I just want to point that out as, as a key point there. And then, again, we, we talked about improvements, but again, that's kind of incremental improvements to, to continue to add to the downtown environment. So, we, this is kind of recapping a little bit of that, but why consider a bid? You know, it's increased beautification of downtown. There have been studies that have, that have proven that in certain parts of the country that bids will increase, increase property values. It's kind of the reduction of crime, the broken window theory, just having a more clean and safe environment. Improved walkability, increased occupancy rates, again, direct advocacy, and increased ease of event coordination. So, just to kind of recap the efforts to date, this is a, this is, we have, we had a committee of seven members. Again, this committee came out of the Norman Downtowners Association. But there were, this is the last bullet point, estimated over 250-plus hours of combined committee member time that was put into the formulation of this business improvement district and the plan itself and property owner outreach. So, as part of that, we had four public meetings. They were held in June, June 9th, June 14th, 14th, and 16th. And these were all at varying times of the day, also in varying formats. We had in-person and virtual. We wanted to make sure that anybody, really specifically property owners, but also retailers, because as you might assume, the assessment in, in many cases will be passed through to retailers. And so, we wanted to make sure that they had ample opportunity to understand what goes into a business improvement district. I don't know if you were taking questions.
Yeah, Cameron, I was just going to ask, what kind of feedback were you getting from the property owners? Positive?
It, so far, you know, I mean, we've had, in full transparency, we've had both sides, but we've had a great positive response from many of the property owners, both major property owners and smaller property owners throughout the downtown area. And to date, have received over 50% support, which is kind of the state, the statute threshold to then form a bid. So, to that point, we had meetings with numerous property owners as we were going through the process, in addition to these public meetings that we had, to make sure that what we were putting together from an assessment structure, from what we were putting together as, from a services standpoint, was what property owners really wanted. And what made this most equitable and fair across all property owners. As you, you know, part of an urban environment is a diversity of types of properties itself. And property sizes, property purposes, purposes meaning retail, office, industrial in small cases, restaurant, professional services. And so, as you can imagine, there are a number of different viewpoints on how a bid should be structured based on what a use of a property is. Those are things we all, we had to balance in, in so many different cases. As part of this, you know, part of the outreach, we send a letter to all bid property owners. In addition to mailed newspaper and social media notice for the public meetings, we maintain a website, downtownnorman.com/bid, that I encourage you to navigate to, to kind of see a recap of some of this information. We had numerous meetings with the City of Oklahoma City's bid oversight staff to determine best practices. City of Oklahoma City has five different business improvement districts in addition to their downtown business improvement district. And so, we met with staff from the downtown business improvement district, in addition to the bid manager that manages the other five districts outside of downtown. And, and I'm only coughing, I ate some peanuts before this. So, and, and we had great takeaways from that. Our, our committee members, Chuck Thompson was one of those, the, the meetings there were some of the best information we received, talking hours and hours of meetings with the bid staff to say, what's working, what's, what's not. Every one of the bids in downtown, in, in all of Oklahoma City are slightly different. And she, the biggest takeaway she's told us was, figure out the culture and what's best for the diversity of types of property owners you have in your district and fit your assessment and your plan to that district. And that's what we've strived to do from the beginning. We reviewed various bid structures across the country. We had meetings with city staff to make sure we were in line both legally and with what the kind of intent of what city staff may, may be interested in from a business improvement district. And we also formed a 501(c)(6) not-for-profit. This is kind of the key piece from a governance standpoint, this five, yeah, question. Okay. This 501(c)(6) not-for-profit will be the governance structure for the business improvement district itself. And I'll get into the, the specific makeup of that 501(c)(6) here in a bit. So, you can pass these around. I actually have more copies than we have people at the table, so if anybody else would like one, feel free to take one. There's, there's only a few more beyond those at the table here. But these are the proposed bid boundaries. We have 334 total parcels. What, and interestingly enough, this is 334 total parcels among 153 property owners. That is an extremely parceled out and extremely diverse as far as the number of properties per property owner relative to most business improvement districts across the country. As an example, let's say, Cambridge Corner, we're discussing a business improvement district, the, the number of property owners relative to number of properties is much, much smaller as a ratio relative to downtown. And so, I'll touch on this here in a bit, but that presented a challenge as a committee, because you're talking about tracking down a number of different property owners that in many cases have PO boxes that, and that have an LLC that you don't, you have no sense of who they are or where they live. The important to note in the bid boundaries, this does exclude single-family. Single-family does not really fit within a business improvement district structure. If you think about a single-family house, most people, if they have a front yard, they're maintaining their front yard. In a business improvement district, that's kind of the idea, is you're maintaining, call it the front yard of a commercial building. Religious institutions, this is excluded by state statute as far, as far as I understand. And then, 501(c)(3) nonprofits and utilities. 501(c)(3) nonprofit, to specify that, this is a nonprofit that owns their building and operates out of their building. If there's a nonprofit that is housed in a building that has private property ownership, they, that private property owner is still subject to paying the bid rate assessment. And so, if I, if I recall, we had about five different nonprofits and then an additional, probably 20 properties that were from religious institutions. And then, utilities is the last one. It just really doesn't fit within the structure of a bid, talking about the OGNE substation as an example. So, they were excluded. So, this is kind of getting more into the assessment formula itself, but just to kind of give you the visual, and you each have the map here, so that will help. As part of the, the tiered assessment structure that we have, we had linear frontage areas. And these linear frontage areas, the red, the green, the dark blue, those are basically to match the level of services that these property owners would be receiving in these specific areas. So, as an example, on Main Street, as we've discussed with the potential vendors that would be, that would be contracting to clean the streets, Main Street would have trash pickup three days a week, whereas the green areas and the blue areas would have it once a week. And then, the rest of the area might have it once every month. And so, as part of that higher level of service, those rate payers are paying a high, slightly higher rate within those geographic areas. So, this is the assessment structure itself. It's, admittedly, it's the, this is a very consolidated version, but, and so, please feel free to ask me any clarification questions that you'd like, whether it's in this meeting or otherwise. But there's three components here. There's taxable value, there's acreage, and then there's linear frontage. I discussed linear frontage, so we'll kind of jump to number three first. This is looking at the three separate frontage areas. In year one, Main Street property owners will pay a linear frontage of $7.50 per linear square, I'm sorry, not linear square foot, per linear foot in front of their building. That's basically, if, if you have a 50-foot side, 50-foot wide building, that's 50 feet of linear frontage that you're paying a rate on in front of your building. James Gardner and Gray Street, the reason there's an asterisk next to this is that in the first year, they will actually be in the side streets Porter 400 East Main category. But when the James Gardner and Gray Street streetscapes, we're talking about a 10-year bid, so when those streetscapes are completed, they will bump up to a middle tier, because they will have additional maintenance needs. They'll have landscaping, they'll have, they'll have more wider sidewalks, things of that nature. And, and the idea is that not only are those areas that need to be maintained, but those likely drive higher, higher traffic due to the new streetscape, and therefore, there will be higher maintenance needs. But those will not be bumped up until those streets are finished. So, if James Gardner and Gray Street finish a year apart from each other, let's say, James Gardner's first, the Gray Street, or I think it's going to be the other way around, Gray Street's first, it'll bump up, and then a year later, James Gardner will bump up into that next category. And so, second, going kind of back to number one, taxable value. So, if, this is best illustrated through some examples that I'll show you in the next two slides, but it's 8% of 1% of a parcel's taxable value, and this is determined by the Cleveland County Assessor. One thing I do want to clarify is that this is a city-maintained district, sorry, city, city admin district. And so, assessments will not be paid to the county, they'll actually be paid to the city that will then flow to the 501(c)(6). And the last component is acreage. And, and essentially, it's $1,100 for every acre of land. As an example, .16 acres, which is a typical Main Street property with 50, 50 feet of linear frontage, it's about $176 a year specific to that component of it. So, just as some examples here, I, the property you see at the top right, that's the property where the garage is housed, 307 East Main. You can see kind of the different components. The reason that, that taxable value, linear frontage, and acreage aren't consistent across every property, taxable value in the state of Oklahoma is subject to a 5% cap on an annual basis. So, a property owner that's owned their property for 30-plus years is going to have a lower taxable value than a property owner that may have just bought their property. So, that kind of suppresses it over time. And so, that's also why we included the acreage component, to balance that out. This, that balanced out, basically, the, a property owner that just purchased a property versus a property owner that had their property for 30 years. And, and that's, that's getting to the kind of equitable component of the business improvement district to make sure that, that a property owner that just bought their property versus a property owner that had their property for 30 years, they're not being inequitably assessed based on the fact that they just purchased their property. And then, of course, the linear frontage assessment. So, 307 East Main and 227 East Main, this is the, the Byrd Dental Building, they have the linear frontage assessment for Main Street. And so, that kind of gives you an example of the total assessments for each of those buildings. 401 West Main, this is Armstrong Bank. Just to note, this is the highest private property assessment in the entire proposed business improvement district, which was in part why included as an example, at $4,400 a year. They're also subject to the linear frontage on Main Street. And then, 101 East Tonawha, this is where Equity Brewing is and Yellow Dog used to be. Just pointing this out as an example, because this is, they're not subject to the linear frontage assessment, which is really inclusive of most properties along Tonawha and Comanche and Yuffala. But they do have the taxable value and acreage. So, again, any questions on the assessment, let me know. But again, I, having had experience with the, the Oklahoma City Business Improvement District in downtown, they have about 12 different components. And so, it's, which, which presents major challenges and, and a major challenge in explaining to a property owner why they're being assessed what. And so, we tried to make this equitable while also keeping it simple enough that it was easy to explain. So, next slide here is the city and the county's contribution. This is from discussions with city staff and county staff, in, in addition to the county commissioners as well. So, as proposed, there will be a separate agreement with the city to cover what's called base-level services. What we mean by that is, the city is already budgeting X amount of funds in the downtown environment to provide some level of maintenance in that area. So, this would essentially be replacing that base level of services. So, what we did was, through discussions through the city attorney's office, inquired with every city department and said, what do you budget on an annual basis for the downtown environment? Which essentially equated to about $57,000 a year annually. So, that will be, as proposed, a supplement into the bid for existing base-level services to provide what's, what's already going on. In addition to that, both city and the county own property within the proposed business improvement district. And so, there will be an additional assessment to be in line with private property owners that will be based on the average taxable value per acre of all private property in the district applied to the acreage of all, of all city and county-owned property. And that equates to about $24,000 a year and $18,000 a year. So, in addition to just the numbers, I would like, I think it's important to point out, this is an example of a great public-private partnership. And where not only are private properties rate payers in this district, city and county also own property that, that has frontage that needs to be maintained. And, and that, that would be in part kind of a contribution as a whole, in addition to those base-level services. So, annual budget, this little, you can see it pretty well up here, I think. So, again, the, the budget is kind of outlined in that, with those three Ms., and then those improvements, that's kind of how we, we lined it out. I will say, just, just to make it clear, on maintenance, maintenance is the big line item. And that's kind of the primary purpose of the business improvement district to begin with. Those, those numbers that were, that are quoted within the budget were bids we received from vendors to make sure that we were in line in our assumption of maintenance within the district itself. Marketing, so this, in first year, what we're proposing is essentially $35,000 for marketing and general marketing, and then about $5,000 in event sponsorships. The, the marketing general is, I'd like to point that out, because this is, this is a really unique opportunity to, we've, we've just, we've been just in discussions with a couple of different firms to look at a, essentially a rebranding opportunity for downtown. A brand for downtown is really important tied to a bid, because that's something that, that events can use, that, that Visit Norman, the CVV can use, you know, just, and that creates an identity and creates a sense of pride. So, we estimate that to be roughly $25,000 to $30,000 to basically do a rebranding campaign that then we could flip into future years to put on banners going down the district and, and things of that nature. So, I think that's a really unique opportunity, and there's actually a couple of local firms based out of Oklahoma City and, and Norman that, that I think would be great for, a great fit for that and have an understanding. And then, lastly, or sorry, the third M is management. So, we have allocated $45,000, which is essentially good for a part-time executive director position. We've also been in discussions with a potential partner that, that I think would be a really great fit to essentially make that a full-time position. And, and that, that, that would, that would turn the, the position into, I think, a really attractive position as far as attracting talent. Now, again, I kind of spoke to the virtue importance of having staff. Staff, you, you have to have staff to adequately manage a budget in the right way. This is not a, this is not a fit for a volunteer position, managing a $233,000 budget especially. And so, those additional line items are kind of related to admin. You know, I could, I, I think it's safe to say, professional services for $10,000, that includes book, bookkeeping, a little bit of counting, filing of a, a return. That's probably more than that's needed, but we put a little bit of contingency in there in the event that attorney may be needed to draft documents or look at contracts and things of that nature. And then, lastly, bid improvements. So, this is another really unique opportunity that, that we have, that we've been in discussions with the, I'm going to get this name wrong, the Cleveland County Community Fund, to essentially have a term sheet on the table that would provide a $100,000 loan in the first year that we, that would be paid out over a five-year time at 5%, which right now is a great interest rate. The, that essentially, that first year, $100,000 would go into the beautification side and improvement side of downtown, where the 100 through 300 blocks of East Main with, with the landscaping beds that in many cases have landscaping from when they were installed 13 years ago. We do a refresh of all those beds and actually have something to maintain and give it a new, fresh look. And in addition to, you know, we've been in discussions with the 400 block of East Main where stash- where Stash and Mercury are to think through like raised bed planters down there and things like that. So it's kind of a continuation of the streetscape with a little different feel, given the limitations they have for streetscape down there. So, so that, that is allowable under the state statute to borrow against the bid, and that would be essentially a $100,000 loan that would go in first year and paid out over five years. And then lastly, city administration fee. As I mentioned, the city would be collecting these assessments and would be reviewing the assessment rule on an annual basis. And so that's a two-and-a-half percent fee to cover that piece. And then last thing, down in bold down here, or actually, a couple of different points here. We put in a protection for property owners that, on an annual basis, no more, I talked about the three components of the assessment. No more than forty percent or less than thirty percent can come from any, any, any one of those three buckets, taxable value, linear frontage, and acreage. And the reason for that is, let's say, just as a scenario, in eight years, you have a complete board turnover. You have, as just extreme example, half the properties that have completely turned over in downtown Norman. And someone tries to come in as a board and say, we want a million-dollar budget now. And we want that, fifty percent of that to go towards linear frontage. That's that protection there to make sure that Main Street property owners or those in linear frontage areas are not inequitably assessed based on future governance. As part of that million-dollar example as well, we also put in a budget cap of five percent plus the previous year's CPI, or ten percent, whichever is lower. So that's basically as a bid budget. So we cannot raise the bid budget any more than that. But I also point out that, let's say, it's not, it's not, it's, I think it's a feasible scenario that we're going to see quite a bit of more multifamily development over the next ten years in downtown Norman. The, that will all add to the tax, or the assessment base. And, and that will essentially bring down assessments for all other property owners, assuming the budget remains flat. So that protection's still in place, but if new development occurs, that also kind of helps existing property owners with their assessments on an annual basis. So just because that five percent plus previous year's CPI, or ten percent, which is ever as low as there, does not mean that you have to assess up to that cap on an annual basis. So the 501(c)(6) board, as I mentioned, this is going to be made up of nine to thirteen board members. As proposed right now, we've, we've formed the board with three incorporators. Obviously, the bylaws could be amended to potentially add more board members if we felt that was appropriate. But the, this would kind of be the representation of the board itself. At least fifty-one percent of private property owners will constitute the board makeup. And this is, this is really key because this is a, a private, or this is a property owner-formed district to begin with, in a, in a property owner-assessed district for the budget. And so you want that representation from property owners that have majority control over the board to make sure that, that they are, they're represented in a way that these are the ones paying for it essentially. Additional board members that may include nonprofits within the district. Tenant representation is key because you have, again, pass-throughs in many cases to tenants that we want, whether it's retailers, restaurants, office users, whoever it may be, that you have tenant representation. And then there, there may be the need, for some reason, to have special expertise, have an attorney on the board to run through legal issues, accountants, architects, things of that nature. And then, and then the city and the county, as bid ratepayers, will each have one seat on the board, and there will be voting members as ratepayers within the district. Of course, your executive director, I discussed that a little bit, and just kind of the importance of that. And then just contracted support professionals as needed. So as far as next steps, you'll, you'll talk about this in your last study session a little bit. But the, under state statute, this, to form the, the district itself requires fifty percent plus one of property owners to sign petition to create the district. We have over fifty percent private property owner support. If the, the county has formally voted that in the event the Business Improvement District is passed by the city, they are included in their petition percentage as well. So they, we had a three-o vote with the county commissioners that they agreed to sign the petition on behalf after city's inclusion. And, and so just to kind of put it in perspective, as with city, county, the one, one excluded entity is Cleveland County Health. And the reason for that is the, they receive their funding from the state of Oklahoma. And the state attorney general made a ruling that that was an improper use of funds to pay for bid assessments. However, they're not excluded in the state statute, so that'll kind of be interesting to see if that's paid. But they cannot sign their petition. So Cleveland County and city combined, we have roughly sixty percent support at this point in total. And then we're just, theoretically, hypothetically, consideration adoption by city council early fall 2022, with assessment invoices going out November 2022, that would be pay and doable, I was like, do and payable, there we go, do and payable by March. So you'd basically have a four-month period. But the bid would actually begin January 1st, 2023, with those services being provided, assuming we stay on schedule. And so this is kind of a recap, but again, benefits, improved higher public realm, higher maintained public realm, increased foot traffic, kind of becoming these spot. You know, as we all know, the SEC will bring changes to Norman. And, and that's, in my opinion, you want an Alabama fan to come to Norman and want to come again. And having that first impression is going to be huge. And having a Business Improvement District in place is going to make a much, much better first impression. And that's, that's, that's coming at us fast. That is coming, there's a set timeline at the very least of 2025. But it, as in discussions, it may be sooner than that. So having this bid in place and having it, you know, call it more a well-oiled machine in year two and three, by the time we're entering the SEC, would be a pretty nice thing to have. And, and then advocacy, advocacy, advocacy. Again, downtown is unique, and I don't say that, that it's necessarily special relative to anywhere else. And, and you know, they're just unique issues in a more urban environment. And so having that advocacy for those issues on behalf of property owners is really important. The, that's, that's most of what I have. I'll just point out just a couple of other things. The, I think a good comparison is, although completely different scale, downtown Oklahoma City Business Improvement District has been in place for twenty-three years. They're now on their third generation of their Business Improvement District. In my opinion, it's made a huge difference in the downtown environment. It was illustrated to me the other day that, that imagine if that Business Improvement District disappeared overnight. That would, basically, the trees would die, the landscaping beds would be overgrown, the trash would start to pile up on the streets, advocacy for issues would essentially disappear. That, if, spend some time in downtown Oklahoma City and look around, and it's a pretty clean environment. That's because of the Business Improvement District. And I'd say clean, and there's also a number of different things that are, that are coordinated and managed and programmed through that bid that people don't realize. And, and all of that would go away. So, but just as far as statistically, it's been in place for twenty-three years. Again, it's third generation, ten-year periods. Its first year, it had forty-five percent private property ownership support. When the city and the county, similar scenario, signed on, that put them over the fifty percent. We're, we're over fifty percent at this point with private property ownership support. In subsequent years, support went to over sixty percent going into the second generation, into the third generation, which I think proves that, of course, these would be different management and different boards. But it showed that, that property owners were feeling like they were getting the value out of it with that increase in percentage. First year with anything is difficult and it's scary. And, and, but I think we can look at examples to see how things have worked and learn best practices to figure out how to manage these the best way. And, and the, one example of a property owner that I think most of you are familiar with is Richard McCowen. He has a number of different major properties in downtown Oklahoma City. He, he gave me permission to throw out his name if you want to have questions from a private property owner's perspective as to the perspective of somebody who's lived with a bid and been on the bid board for thirteen years now. And, and then the last thing I'll say is just, I've mentioned this at the very beginning, we were dealing with a tremendous challenge as a bid committee. We have 153 parcels among 336, sorry, 153 property owners among 336 parcels. Think about that, you basically cut out where you have six percent of all property, and then five percent, and then five percent, and then five percent, and four percent. You very quickly get down to a property owner that has a single property. And, and we tried our best to do outreach to all property owners. But again, you know, whether it's PO boxes, or LLCs, or whatever it may be, you can't uncover and talk to everybody. So we feel really good about the fifty percent, over fifty percent we support we have to date with private property ownership, given the challenges there. So, questions?
That was one of my main questions from that meeting Friday, and I'm just telling you, I don't have dog in the hunt. And I wish I'd have reached out to you earlier, it was on my mind to do that, or to Catherine. There were concerns about what was sent out to them, that it was misleading. Do you have a copy of what was sent to them, the notice that was sent to them that we could look at?
Yeah, absolutely. So one of them, so there are two different, there's a notice that was sent out of the public meetings. And it's on one of my slides here.
Whatever they received, that would show that they benefited and, because they were saying, hey, I thought I was receiving money, not that I was having to pay money. And I don't know because I haven't seen it.
Sure, and I'd be happy to provide a copy of the letter that, that was a letter. So this, this here on the top left was the notice of public meetings. And the public meetings were meant to, is about ninety-five percent of this presentation that you just saw, that we gave four different times. And, and so the meetings were really the intent of, hey, this is the components of all the Business Improvement District. I, I, in full transparency, I also sent out a personal letter as a property owner that said, this is, this is what I see as the benefits and, and I, I think you should sign a petition support of this Business Improvement District. I can provide a copy of the letter, in my opinion. Nothing in there read as, that you're receiving money. And so, but I'm happy to provide that, and that can be distributed.
My concern is because, and I'm not taking anything for fact or anything, I'm just, what I heard was, there were some people that thought that, and then they were saying that there were even people that had signed it that wanted to retract. So I don't know, like I said, I'm just repeating. I'm just trying to do some due diligence, because if it comes to the point where people say, I signed this, not understanding what I've known, I don't want a lawsuit to come out of this to try to stop it if we push it forward, and they say, hey, well, look at this, what would you think if you were reading this? Sure, I don't know what it says.
So the, essentially, the letter in summary, and I, again, I'll send this out. The letter in summary summarized the points of what the Business Improvement District will be doing, in addition to what I saw as the benefit of that. The, and as being a property owner myself, that was where this was coming from. The, included in the letter was a, my contact info to say, I will send you a copy of the plan, anything that you'd like, in addition to a link to that website that had all of the information that was essentially factual, everything on there. I would say essentially, everything was factual. It was basically FAQs with a link to the plan that you can download, with a link to the petition that if you wanted to download and sign that. And so, again, in my opinion, there was nothing in there that I'd call misleading other than saying, yes, I am a supportive property owner. And, and so, again, I can send that out, and you can kind of decide for yourself at that point.
Hey, thank you for last Friday, and I've got some questions too.
Sure.
Let's go back and clarify the city and county contributions. So when you say that the city owes $57,000 or combined with the city and the county for base level services here, are you saying we're, are we saving that money with the services you'll be doing? Or what will our $57,000 combined go to?
Good question. So that, there are a number of different services that the Business Improvement District, through vendors governed by the 501(c)(6), will be directly outsourcing, things like trash pickup. Someone has to empty the trashcans right now. That will then be, that will then be managed by the Business Improvement District. Landscaping beds are currently maintained by the city. That will be maintained by the Business Improvement District. So it's essentially supplementing or substituting what those services are currently being provided and paying into those, because those are base level services that the city has already been providing, that the bid will then be managing at that point. So kind of easy way to summarize that is there are a number of different services that the, the city will be outsourcing to the bid to then manage.
We have Francisco here.
Are we saving money then? Are we, are we going to be saving money if we outsource the cleaning and the streets, the streets maintenance of downtown?
We haven't done any analysis of that, but the whole idea is that it would be a higher level of maintenance. So I think that, you know, we're not going to cut out the park maintenance folks that are better maintained. Now they'll just go to another park or something like that. So, so now we think that the idea is to save, is to perform that higher level of maintenance.
And councilmembers, I can tell you that Mr. Brewer requested meetings with city staff throughout the process. We work jointly to identify types of services that we thought could be better provided by a Business Improvement District, just because they'll have eyes on downtown every day. And city staff, it may be a scheduled, you know, we're going to go work on this one project for a couple of days in the downtown, and then we may not have eyes on the downtown for a couple of weeks. And during that period of time where city staff doesn't have eyes on downtown, you know, we could have a trashcan get knocked over, or we could have a sprinkler line break in the landscaping, and, you know, plants are dying, and we just, we're just not there on top of it every day because we've got lots and lots of acreage to maintain. So we did have those conversations about where we thought it would be most advantageous, not just cost-effective, but, but the best level of service, the best bang for that dollar. And we do see value in terms of being able to direct city staff to work on larger things. So when we talk about, it's, it's most effective when city crews are driving a lawnmower that will mow a sixteen-foot wide swath, as opposed to city crews pushing a 21-inch wide lawnmower. Those are the things that we thought, you know, the Business Improvement District is definitely.
Snow removal being another one, it's not cost-effective for the bid to go and purchase a snowplow. And so there's, there were a couple of things that, that not included in that $57,000 that will be included in the city's budget, that the city will still be maintaining.
Okay, Friday, some other questions came out too as well. So you say that we have an excluded list of entities that will be excluded from the bid. What about non-retail establishments like law firms, apartment, not apartment buildings, but office buildings? They, they feel too, they were kind of deceived when that letter came out. But I'd like to see the letter, which you sent out as well. But if they don't want to be part of this bid, is there an opt-out procedure? Or once a bid environment or the parameters are set, are they stuck in that for how many years? Is it ten years?
Ten-year, ten-year formation of bid. The, all property owners are included within the Business Improvement District is the easy answer, so.
And there's no way to opt-outs, no opt-out procedures?
No individual opt-out, no, correct. There is the potential that the Business Improvement District could be dissolved by, I don't know the procedure for that, but essentially would be from the board governance level that the Business Improvement District could be dissolved in the event that, I mean, just in a scenario, three years in, people feel like they weren't getting their value, and they dissolve the bid. But there's not individual opt-out of the, of the Business Improvement District.
All right, thank you.
Councilmember Schuler?
So this meeting that is being alluded to by multiple members of council right now, last Friday, what was the intent of that meeting? Can you shed more light on those that were not there?
Sure, so this was a meeting that was called by the mayor. Mayor, do you want to, you want to?
I can.
Sure.
It was conflict resolution. We sensed that there was discord and tried to get that discord aired and see if we could find solutions. And some people put in, or one person put in a written set of objections to what was going on. And I saw Mr. Brewer's answers to those, and they were very complete. We're waiting on another set from Mr. Goodman. And I don't know when we're going to get that, but he had some specific things. It was hard in the meeting to sit down there, and he'd say paragraph this and that. You'd have to start to look, and we didn't do it. But that's what, what Mr. Brewer's trying to do now. And then in two weeks, have you set that date yet?
I've not, no, yeah.
Okay, in approximately two weeks, we'll meet again at the library to be able to discuss them.
Hold on. So, there were two, you were there, and then two other councilmembers that do not represent that specific, this specific ward were at that meeting? Was there a reason why the rest of council was not invited to that meeting?
No, there was not. It was just a meeting that was open to every, not everybody, to the property owners, where I was trying to get some conflict resolution.
So, why were there two other members of council at that meeting, whenever the rest of us were not notified or told that we had...
Specifically, the ward member.
Specifically, the ward member was at that meeting.
It was put out, that when the meeting was going to be, that's how I had it in my calendar, it was put out.
Sure, but it was intended for the property owners, not for council?
It was intended for the property owners and not for council, but I didn't mean to exclude you.
No, I just, full transparency...
You betcha.
About, you know, questions that are being asked here, and, you know, comments and concerns, I think that it's really important for us to understand, like, where these things are coming from and how they're being painted, because if I wasn't at that meeting, I don't know what is being said is truthful or not truthful. And so, because I wasn't privy to that information, and so this line of questioning is a little bit troublesome, because the rest of us have no idea where it's coming from, based on the information that we've been provided here.
Well, I will ensure that at the library meeting, where we hope, that I will make sure that you get a copy of that.
I very specifically sent a text to Brenda asking about this meeting, and she said, council's not allowed to go, because I had this in my calendar, from him bringing it up at another meeting. So, I assumed that if council wasn't going, that if any council member would be there, it would have been Helen, since that's her ward. But I was told that council members were not supposed to attend that, that it was for business owners only. So, why...
What I told you was, this is not the meeting where council will have it presented to them, and this is really supposed to be for the property owners to get together or hear about it and air out any grievances or whatever.
You said, this is just for property owners, it's not for council or the public. And I said, oh, I thought this was an open meeting. You said, no, it gets presented to council next Tuesday.
Correct. So, just to be clear, I feel like, as a property owner initiative to bring this bid forward to the city, I think that it's very important for property owners to be able to have those conversations in confidence and to do the conflict resolution that they need to do to continue to move this process forward. And it's slightly concerning that it feels like that's not solely what the purpose was. And it feels a little nefarious, if I'm being honest, with, you know, having other members there, whenever other people were not privy to that conversation. All of that being said, I mean, what Mr. Brewer has just presented to us, and kind of the way that has been really carefully laid out about trying to manage the way that assessments are kind of taken into consideration, the mix and the blend, so that property owners are not assessed disproportionately, or trying to make up things, I think was really thoughtful. And, I mean, I think we've, and I thank you for addressing the Oklahoma City Downtown bid and its 20-year kind of longevity, because that's one of the questions that I was going to ask. What was the percentage when they first started in property or business owner approval? I guess property owner approval to now, 23 years later? And you've said that it's gone up to roughly 60%, and that's without the city and the county? Or combined with city and county?
I believe that's city and county combined, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, like, I think that that shows, that speaks really highly of what the Business Improvement Districts are doing. Are there similar mechanisms for the other ones, or they are not yet into their 10-year kind of really vote?
Capitol Hill, as an example, in South Oklahoma City, is in their second generation. I think they've been in place for 13 years. I can't speak to the others as confidently. There's one on 23rd Street, one on Western Avenue, one in Stockyards. And I don't know the longevity of each of those, but I know that, I think Western Avenue is also in their second generation, as far as I know, so.
Yeah, I mean, I do understand the concerns about, you know, when there is, when there are property owners that don't, you know, vote to institute the bid and challenges that that provides. But it is clearly laid out in state statute how the process needs to move forward and kind of what to do. And if we're already at 50% plus, that's without city and county, we're already in a better position than Oklahoma City was when they first instituted their downtown bid, which I think is really key to highlight. So, thank you for all of the work that you and the rest of your committee members have done to move this process forward. I think that we really need something like this in Norman, and I think downtown is the perfect place to start this conversation and to start with a bid. So, thank you.
Councilmember Forman.
So, Cameron, we served on the Historic District Commission together. We really are into this sort of stuff, urbanism, all that. So, this definitely piques my interest. I'm very familiar with Oklahoma City bids, really big fan of moving forward. I don't think we can undermine the importance of curb appeal, especially in Norman. If we all remember Jim Gallagher's, you know, ill-fated years president, he cut, like, landscaping and everything like that, like, the next week, he was gone. Like, I'm not saying it was flowers, but it was flowers, you know? So, I think it's really important, and it does make a huge difference. You look at, you know, just downtown and how it looks different, and the Christmas lights and all this, and it's, makes it an attractive place to go for holidays and things. So, I'm excited to want to move forward with this, as long as we can get the property owners and everything very comfortable. I don't want to do anything that would agitate them, or that they don't want to do, but if we're looking like we're on board, then I'm good with moving forward. So, then my next question would be, Daryl, when would we see this come forward?
I'll ask Catherine, we just want to make sure, timing-wise, that we've met all of the statutory obligations.
So, the first step set out by statute is to put a resolution on your agenda acknowledging receipt of the petition and instructing the clerk to set up a hearing and publish notice in accordance with the statute. That will be August 23rd. The hearing has, you have to give notice any time between 10 and 30 days before the hearing dates, with September 13th.
We are, Cameron did file it in my office Friday afternoon, and I'm currently going through, double-checking his percentages, and there's a lot of property.
And I would just share with council, and Councilmember Peacock notified us that he was not going to be here, didn't want to spread the love of COVID with all of us, that he did indicate he fully supports moving forward with the Business Improvement District, and just wanted you to know where his thoughts were.
Councilmember...
I have one more question. There was a concern that was brought up on the board. Who gets to decide who's appointed to the board? And are you going to appoint any of those people that are in opposition to kind of balance it out?
Second question, yes. The, I think that's important. The, that there are specific property owners that have asked some very constructive, that had, call it constructive criticisms of the plan itself, that I think will make the Business Improvement District better by asking some tough questions to make sure that, that not only are we putting out what I call the positive things of the bid, but asking, you know, questions about, hey, how can we make this better? And how, what are some things we could refine here? I think it's also important to point out, the, just as an example of something that's already occurred, the cap, the budget cap, that was something that we had discussed in detail as a committee. And the further we got along, just frankly, that was a, what's the word I'm looking for? A notable missing piece of the plan itself, that should have been in there. And so, as part of that, the formation, the original incorporators of the board, we felt that that should have been in the plan all along, so we implemented that policy. There are a number of different policy items that the 501(c)(6) board can do to address concerns moving forward as part of the, if there's any concerns that we see are valid as part of improving the plan itself. As far as the selection process, we plan to post a board application. The selection will be made from members of the committee itself. And specific committee members, we haven't directly determined who that is, but that's something that we plan to do over the next week. But this is in coordination with a few of the major property owners as well, that will also be part of the selection, to make sure that the property owner representation, it's really property owners who are making these selections for board members.
Okay. Also, just from my curiosity, how are the votes, how are they taken? Is it, one property owner gets one vote, or if you own a percentage of property?
It's a, it'd be, it'd be one for one. And as far as the original, that's part of the process from here, is to determine how bylaws are set up with voting members.
I meant to get to the point of the 50% plus one, how are votes taken?
Oh, I see. Okay, so it's...
Approval.
Yeah, so, the 50% plus one is based on total acreage of the district, so...
It's weighted?
It's weighted, correct. I don't know if that's the right word. I mean, the, so, let's say someone owns five properties that total 1.5 acres. They have, and there's, I think there's 63 acres in the district, 1.5 of the 63, that's their percentage that they could vote for.
Okay, so it is. It's not just like, hey, I own a business, I own a business, this business is three times as much as this business, but they still only have one vote?
Yeah, like, the largest property owner in downtown, they didn't have one vote. They had, it was based on their total percentage.
Okay.
It's based on area.
Area, I couldn't explain that very clearly.
So, I am also in support of this. I'm not sure how many people are not in support, that are in that bid area. Did you, I think you had mentioned something or alluded, you had some protests about it. Do you know how many?
I don't know how many. I mean, just as an example, the meeting on Friday was really intended, is for all property owners, but is really intended for those who had, either were against it, or were interested in, you know, criticism, let's just say. And I don't know exactly, we had seven or eight there, in total.
But of those seven or eight, were they actually property owners, or just people there to complain?
Those are property owners.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, there are others there as well.
Okay, that were not complaining, that were in favor of it, just kind of learning some information?
Right, yes.
Okay. So, I'm just curious, I'd really like to hear from Councilmember Grant, because I know she's gone a lot with Councilmember Hall, when, before she was actually sworn in and saw some of these meetings and listened to some of the concerns. So, just from you being at those meetings, since this is your ward, I'm really curious what your opinion is about, you know, whenever you went to these meetings, was there more in opposition, more in favor? Because I know a bid is a pretty big deal, and I'm all in favor for it. I'm curious what your thoughts are.
I saw support, and actually at Downtowners last week, I think I was hearing a property owner or a business owner complain about how the city wasn't maintaining the bumpouts and all the stuff that had died this summer. So, I really do see the bid, like, helping with that. I think he was complaining about rodents hiding in there. So, yeah, I see support. I have heard criticism, but I'm really impressed with the fact that one of the property owners' criticism was taken and incorporated to make it better. So, I feel very confident with it moving forward. Thank you.
Councilmember Forman.
And just a reminder, we already have a current bid district in the city of Norman, so this isn't new. But I was just going to ask Catherine, how is this different from the existing bid that we have now? Is the proposal much different? Is it very similar?
The existing bid we have now is in University North Park, and it's primarily focused on the park. And so, it's, those funds have been used to pay for lichen improvements, holiday lights, fountain repairs, things like that. That was a little bit different. They don't have their own 501(c)(6) organization, so it's an advisory board that makes recommendations to council, council holds that money. And the advisory board, we appoint four members, and then the other five members are made up of property owner representatives. And so, that's actually pretty close in time. I think you'll be seeing the final assessment roll for that bid district in September.
Mayor, can I make a comment on that? Just as far as the very unique difference between those two, that's where we feel that it's important that we have a board that governs this, given the diversity of property types and how many property owners there are in this proposal here, so.
Councilmember Hallman.
Yeah, I would note, I think one of the biggest points in favor of this that I've heard and that I agree with generally is, the city of Norman has invested several millions of dollars in the infrastructure of downtown and Main Street, new sidewalks, new lights, benches, bike racks, artwork, all those types of things, over the last 15 to 20 years. And if we're investing that type of money into this infrastructure, having a level of maintenance that's higher than what we've been able to, or willing to provide that area, makes sense to have something like this to enhance that and maintain what we've done, so that it lasts longer and looks nice longer and things like that. So, that's one of the biggest points that I've found myself being in favor of this, is helping to better maintain the investment that we've already made in the infrastructure of the area. And then also, you know, the untold amount of investment that private property owners have made in the buildings and fixing those up, businesses that have moved to downtown over the last 10 to 15, 20 years because of the improvements that have been made, and that ideally, most of the businesses, you know, to the point of being able to opt out or not, ideally, most of the businesses are benefiting from this enhanced maintenance. So, it'd be unfair to say you got to opt out and not pay anything, but still benefit from, you know, just because you're in the middle of two businesses that are, or two properties that are paying it. So, I agree with it having to be a kind of an all-in or not situation. And ideally, you know, maybe it's so successful, other parts, other streets and blocks decide in the future that they want to join in, perhaps. I would definitely like to...
Councilmember, can I make a point on that?
Yeah, please.
So, that is an important thing to note. There is the possibility that you can expand a Business Improvement District within the 10-year period. That requires a 60% majority in the increased area. And so, just to note, as far as statutory, statutory procedures, so.
Well, that, and just making sure that there is tangible or noticeable improvements that these property owners can see that they're getting back for their investment, and especially, I would say, on the fringes of the boundary, that those folks don't feel like that they're, you know, all the attention's on Main Street, that's where most people are going, so it makes sense that a lot of the attention goes there. But that if they're on the edge and they're still in it, that they're getting, you know, they're seeing that benefit, too. And then my main questions, I guess, would be, the former Republic Armstrong Bank building, four-story office building, is it, the assessment that's based on a total to the owner of the whole building, or each entity in the building? I'm not sure in that one if, because I know, like, formerly in the financial center, each floor was, not every floor, but different floors had different owners in some cases, so.
Yeah, it's five parcel. So, it, I think Armstrong alone, including parking lots, has six different parcels in total. So, it's all based on parcel from the, as determined by the Cleveland County Assessor.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, so, a building, a business on Main Street on the first floor, that's got second floor above with apartments or something, or an office even, the business that's in the first floor, they're not paying that yearly fee themselves, correct?
It is...
It's to the whole building?
By statute, and within the plan itself, the private property owners are required to pay assessments. How, if that's passed through, is determined on a property-by-property basis.
Okay.
But it's not the bid, it's not, under the bid itself, it is private property owners that are required to pay for their property.
Councilmember Grant.
I keep saying private, it's also public.
Just to point back to some businesses, too, some of the feedback was that they thought this was very valuable to them, because things like power washing the sidewalk and all that stuff was outside their budget. And so, getting in on this was, like, seen as a boon to them, like, you know, making their storefronts nicer. But also to the point about what we're willing to do down there, I heard at Downtowners from Public Works, actually, that it's about manpower, and parks don't have enough people to be maintaining all that landscaping, so.
I believe it, yeah.
And I agree.
Things to think about for the budget later.
Curb appeal is a big deal.
It is.
It really is, and there are a lot of things. Art walk, when we were taking pictures of art walk and things, I was looking around, and I knew about those rodents that were down there by the ice cream store, and I was thinking that... the ice cream store, and I was thinking that shouldn't ever happen. That shouldn't be a deal. But it is, mice do that, other bugs do that. This is a way of getting the whole street to look good, and hopefully, it does grow along Main Street. We've lost our center of business, and we've kind of spread it out along Main Street. This is a way to make sure that that historic Main Street stays beautiful like it does now with the, with the home that we have in the old buildings. So, that's just my thoughts on it.
Mr. Mayor, just one question. Cameron may know, and I know that Cameron and former Councilmember Hickman spent hours and hours and hours working on it. If you are a business owner and you pay that assessment, I would assume that assessment would be a tax-deductible business expense?
Don't know that, but I'm just curious. I assume so. If, I mean, putting on my, like, semi CPA hat, I don't have CPA. I can't, I can't say it.
But it seems logical that it could possibly be.
Where's Robert?
It's a business expense to me.
All right. Any further discussion on that?
On the board that you're having there, are you going to have somebody with?
Sir, we're not, this is a council.
Okay, because then someone can address the issue with ADA? They said there's no one's going to be on their board. How are they going to be, to do the improvements on that business area without their approval of the disability community? Are we going to keep on doing the same thing over again, making mistakes?
Right, well-taken. We'll, we'll add that, thank you. Thank you. Anyway, before shifting to discussion two, let's take a 10-minute break and be back at 20 after.
I would like to ask that. Is there anything that you are doing to address ADA concerns? Because that seems to be an ongoing issue with things like this in Norman where there's things that aren't quite built to standards, and we're not having anyone representative of the ADA on board.
Yeah, absolutely. So, I think that goes back to advocacy for specific issues in the urban environment. That, that will be, that will be an important component of the executive director and staff to make sure that concerns are addressed in the downtown environment. And that's, I think that's, that's another key piece, is that that executive director is really a voice for not just property owners, but all downtown issues, and ADA being an important component of that, where they can then advocate for ADA accessible improvements in that, in that area. Funds may not necessarily be going, from the Business Improvement District may not be going into ADA improvements because typically those are expensive improvements, but that could be something advocating that's including in the city's capital improvement plan, as an example, so.
I would just like to suggest Progressive Independence is pretty close to there, and I feel like it's in this area.
Okay.
I think it would be advantageous to reach out to them
Sure.
And get in touch with their director and see if someone from their business that is part of that group could maybe help or assist or could be voted on for that board.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Thanks, Cameron.
Thank you.
Let's just take a break until 20. We will reload the presentation and be ready for number two.
I'm going to give it to Brenda.